Morning, everybody. It's eight thirty. We'll get going. First order of business is the agenda.
I'm going to approve the agenda as presented.
Move it seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
So unanimous. Public comment. Is there anyone here to take advantage of this time or online? Okay, we're ready to move on. Informational meeting for the Hancock County Budget Advisory Committee's 2024 budget estimates. Any questions or comments? This is on the BAC, what the BAC sent to the commissioners. Ready online? Ready to move on? Okay, approval of the minutes.
I'm going to move to approve the minutes of November seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, Commissioner, as ready to present it.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. HR took the resignation of General Clerk Patrice Crossman effective January twenty-sixth. She will be retired.
I'm going to move to accept the resignation of General Clerk Patricia Crossman effective January twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-four, and thank her for her years of service to the county.
Moved and seconded. Any comment? I'd just like to say thank you, Patricia. I'm gonna miss be calling and do not like who's calling before I even say anything. So, thank you.
I will miss that.
Thank you. All right, so we have a motion to the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to move to approve. I'm going to move to approve the HR manager to advertise for the clerk's position both in-house and throughout Side East.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous.
I'm going to move to approve, I'm going to move to acknowledge the retirement of Administrative Assistant Cheryl Cody, effective March first, two thousand and twenty-four, and thank her for many years of service to the county.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. And again, Michelle, congratulations, and we'll miss you.
Thank you.
Any further comment or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to, I'm going to move to acknowledge the retirement of Lieutenant Tim Cody, effective January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, and to thank him for his many years of service to the county.
Moved and seconded. There's not here. Congratulations. Never really saw much of you, but we'll miss you. Thank you. Any further discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. They're unanimous. Next up, to recognize Christopher Thorne's retirement on Friday, December twenty-ninth, and approve pursuant to the Return of Work Policy, Section Three, Paragraph, dump it on September nineteenth, but will rehire and work on January first.
Well, as I've said before, I think the Retire Return to Work Policy needs full review. And I'm, as you know, I have several suggestions for what I would like to see changed in that policy. And I think before we take action for any request, that that review should happen. Those amendments should be made if I'm going to make any, and then the applicant can redo that if he still wants to continue with his request, follow through at that time. That's why I think we should table it for the town being, we should review that policy going through it, deciding if we want to make any changes, and then, once we finalize those changes, we're comfortable.
So is that a motion?
I'm going to, I'm going to move, I'm going to table the request for Chris Thorne for retire Return to Work Policy until after the policy has been reviewed. It's just happening in today's meeting.
So you're tabling it forward to this meeting? Is that your intention?
That's to be decided. There's no reason, well, there could, there could be a good reason why. It may have to go back to HR manager for, for alterations to the agreement. So that's not a given, but there's no reason, if we don't make any changes, there's no reason we can't decide today, but there is, there may be a reason why we could, could, so.
So we're going to table it forward and then we'll deal with it then again if we have to. Is that a motion? Is that, is that your intention?
Let me see. So the motion should be to table request action later in the meeting after the after the review of the policy has been conducted. That's my motion. That's it?
Okay, yeah, so, okay, so we will be at least talking about it after item thirteen B.
Right.
Is the intention, okay? Okay, so that, that was your motion. That was your second. All in favor?
Aye.
Three unanimous.
I'm going to move that we transfer three thousand dollars from the Apple funds to the registry fees posted account.
We have a motion moved and seconded. Does anybody want to elaborate on that, or is everybody clear what's happening?
I, please don't make me come up. I hurt my knee last night. We, we, we switched postage meters in twenty-two, and the postage hasn't matched since, and I requested data from Pitney Bowes to see if they put the money back on the new machine, and it's quite, it's very difficult to determine, and we have, we are going through years to make sure that it's correct, so, but we need a little money to be flushed with what everyone has paid for postage. And I'm hoping to get the money back from Pitney Bowes, but it's a lot of work. Their reports are not anywhere near as good as you would think.
So is there going to be an update?
Well, no, but this will make us flush and everybody have what they think, and plus, the jail room has forty-three dollars to get through the end of June, and they're already almost in the hole again, so.
Is this something, though, that we should be reviewing, who we're doing, like getting rid of Pitney Bowes and something else?
Well, no, I think it's, once we get the accounts flushed again, we'll just, we will balance every month. Every report that we used to get before this meter told us every month what was on the machine when I was balancing to everyone, and this one does not. So that's why I think that the money didn't get credited back onto the machine when we got the machine. But I am working with someone from Pitney Bowes, but, you know, when you go down one morning and it says you had thirty-eight dollars and it's a Monday morning, you're like, I need money on this machine because it says, like our accounts say that we have like twenty-six hundred dollars, and when I look at the money that we had on machines, when we, when the new ones were put on, it adds up to within sixty-five dollars of what, what I'm lacking, so I'm like, and, and he did tell me that the money was put on purchase power accounts, but two different ones, and we only have one, so it's a cha, it's a chasing game, so.
It sounds like there'll be an audit up there.
Yes, but it's going to take some time.
Okay, moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John, that's unanimous.
I'm going to move to approve the removal of part-time corrections officer, Stacey Tillman, from the county payroll.
Seconded. Any discussion or questions, Tim? All in favor?
Aye. I'm going to move to approve the removal of part-time corrections officer, Cadidra Kidd, from the county payroll.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions, Tim? You all right?
Hold it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So unanimous.
I'm going to move to approve the removal of part-time corrections officer Dexter Brown from the county payroll.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye. Uh, I'm gonna I'm, I'm hesitant to get to him. Nancy's already retired.
Yeah, they take, so she wanted to work, stay on as part-time.
Yeah.
But due to retirement and her benefits and such, she's unable to stay on payroll, so that's why she's been on since that date, but she, now she's actually performed.
Okay, I'm going to move to accept the resignation of Corrections Officer Nancy Pelletier, effective November first, two thousand and twenty-three, and to thank her for her many years of service to the county.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. My only question, this doesn't preclude her coming back part-time if she wanted, or does it?
Yes. That's what we advised. She can not work. She can't be on county payroll.
Did she retire?
Yeah, she retired.
For me too?
Yes.
But she can't come back part-time if she wanted?
That's what I was advised, correct. And that's what I was about to, we was, she wanted to work part-time, but she was advised that she could not, so that's why. We're going to resign. She wanted to rehire. She wanted, she wanted to do that.
So why aren't we acknowledging the retirement, Nancy, as opposed to recognizing the resignation? I know that both separations were, seems more honorable to me to recognize the retirement.
Retirement, yep.
Can we, I'm going to withdraw my motion, John. I'm going to draw your second. So I want to move to recognize.
Well, well, I, I have a question on that while we.
I'm not trying to put on a pose. What is your question?
Well, my question is, why couldn't she come back part-time?
She can't come back part-time, but we have to have a full retirement in order for her to receive the benefits of being first, and for her to receive her retirement out of her. So it's language.
It's language, okay.
So she retires, she can come back part-time.
Correct. It's, it's language in terms of separation.
Okay. That's what she was seeking to do. I was understanding that she couldn't do it. She couldn't gain her benefits if she was on county payroll.
Right, well, she has to retire, so it's retired, it's almost like retire for term.
Exactly, that's what I.
I mean, so she has to retire, she has to separate fully, that she can get her, her health insurance and her retirement, and then she can be rehired as a part-time employee.
Okay, so.
You'll, you'll come back to us at some point, yeah.
I guess, if that's the answer, you're right, to some point, you'll be hired.
Yeah, so we should acknowledge her retirement is what we should do.
Correct, so that she can get her health insurance and her retirement.
I made that motion. Okay, I'm going to move to acknowledge the retirement, Corrections Officer Nancy Pelletier, effective November first, two thousand and twenty-three, and thank her for, for many years of service to the county.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? That motion's all right. Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
So unanimous. Tim, the discussion on the use of funds for jail expenses.
You want to engage in this?
You can start, yeah, it's your part.
What was we, let me start with the nurse side thing, or?
Where would you want?
We have, um, the opioid funding that came in for we have, the nurse now would like to pick up a full forty hours a week, which contracted, right now thirty-two hours, that is paid for the M A T grant. Seeking eight hours a week from that funding to pay for her to work on Saturday, eight hours on Saturday, which give us five days a week.
Excuse me, as a contract?
Yes, so we would have a eight-hour, we just do an eight-hour contract for the county for eight hours of work on Saturdays, yes, yep.
And that would be paid for through the opioids.
I would like, because it's all under the M A T, you would be like, that would be an ideal thing for it, I mean.
Sounds, well, there's three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, and we're having trouble finding these for, and so I think this is a good use.
Well, I think it's a great use. I think that's probably maybe what the funds were intended for, things like.
I was, I was sitting down, talking about, trying to find somebody three days a week, so we'd have somebody seven days, but she said she would like to pick up the Saturdays, so she will not work Mondays and Thursdays, so I think I still may go forward to find somebody part-time, two days a week, check one, give you back the funds, like, request the same thing, because you have a version of seven days a week.
Do you know what the cost of that would be?
We're paying thirty dollars an hour.
About thirty an hour?
Yep, sorry, so it's two forty dollars a day, time shift, two.
Twelve four eighty is what you.
Yes, right.
How much?
Twelve four eighty, twelve thousand four hundred and eighty dollars. That's Tim's remote.
So I'm going to move to approve using twelve thousand four.
Twelve thousand four hundred and eighty.
Yeah, I know it, but when's this, when you, just by this, this is fair.
What? I'd say, you should represent December first.
December first.
Or else that, January first, whatever you feel feels best.
It's.
To me, it's the sooner the better.
Yeah, okay, but here's, here's the problem, you just can't, for, how long do you want to draw funds for all this?
I think we'll do, like we do for a contract, we'll do a one-year contract, we'll just add it.
Okay, so.
We'll do a one-year contract.
So twelve four eighty would be for a year.
For a year, yes.
So it seems like you want to start with just January first, so that we can iron out.
Okay.
What is the title of that, O P S, what?
National Opioid.
What?
Na, N O I P S.
Well, if, if we're talking about doing this for the, the first of January, would, shouldn't we have a more concrete document in front of us?
Yeah, I mean, we can.
We got time.
Yeah, I can, I can, like I said, it's going to have to be a, a basic contract again until we get something finalized, but.
Basically, you want to get one new motion today.
Well, we, we, I mean, I think.
Concept.
The con, we endorse the concept that we think it's going to be some funds.
For the con, for the contract, decide on January first.
Does that make sense? Does that work for your?
Okay, you're suggesting January first.
I would, I would, it would give us a little time.
And we have the agreement in place hopefully.
Yeah. I, I think, does that sound, but.
Yes.
Good, so we have, I'll come back.
Yeah, we have consensus that we want, we want to do this.
In the next, we can follow short with our policy department, run operation of the jail. I'll pick up from there.
So we do have under the Treasurer's section, too, to talk about the actual shortfall more, so I don't know if you want to keep skipping through everybody and then we'll get to that section, we to talk to that, about that, or how do you want to handle it, I guess, but.
Because we're both the same conversation, so, anyway, commissions, papers, that's fine.
Because I could, it really doesn't matter to us if it's more appropriate while he's, while he's standing right here.
We're not going to make him stay.
I'll stay, yeah, I'll stay for it.
If you could wait till the Treasurer's section, and I can give him that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. I T, new phone system.
Shappi, you ready?
Sure.
Okay, then I'm going to move to approve the quote number one-one-eight-eight-five from Sierra Communications LLC, the equipment, labor, five-year software subscription, to switch over to a new phone system with a sum of forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-nine dollars and forty-four cents, with such, with such sums to be paid for using Apple funds.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Ah, but, uh. All right, do you want to touch on anything, or it's a large sum of money?
Well, we're pointing out that, uh, we can't even get parts for the system. It was installed in two thousand and nine, and if you want to get handsets and stuff like that, we're going to eBay and Amazon to actually find parts. And on occasion, I'm actually having to check out the system just to reset it, want it back active, and if it's going to get active.
How soon do you think it could get started?
They didn't give me a time estimate yet, that's, ours.
Maybe, but it'll be the music, too.
Yeah, it might be, but, uh, one of the big advantages of it will be if E M A or another department gets a new location, because it's just the I P base. Through the internet, we'll actually be able to add in a remote location to our full system, while them have to buy one of their own, and there'll still be an extension of our system. So if you want to get E M A, they're a different location, just type in the mutation code number, and it still has me just like you did here.
And that would work for the airport, so.
That's correct. If we want to extend it to there, we could do the same thing.
Okay, any other questions, or all in favor?
Aye.
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 So unanimous.
Are you all set with your license renewal, correct?
Uh, the second one, the scale server license, I guess, that's.
I'm set with that. Move to approve the renewal of the server software licenses for a period of five years from Gov Connection Incorporated to a sum of nineteen thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and fifteen cents, with such sums to be paid for.
And that was, yeah, the scale server licenses, right, that's a three-year period.
Three years. Did I, I said five?
Sure, five.
That's the most I could get out of this stuff. Actually, I think it's thirty-five months, which is a year. And that's the longest we could get, as long as I could get on.
Three years, okay. That's why most of three years, you know.
Oh, you know what, in the math, it said five years, that's why.
Okay. And the title said cybersecurity is a five-year, that's what was taken out of my budget, and we said we was trying to get it under our, for five years, and I was able to get that for, you know, fifty thousand for five years.
Okay, so, yeah, where the scale server, everybody's all set?
Yeah.
So it's three years, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Three unanimous.
The Bureau of Cyber Security Software, I move to approve the proposed amendment to the existing agreement with Tyler Technologies to provide cybersecurity software and services from Tyler Technologies for a period of five years in the amount of fifty thousand dollars, and to pay for such costs from Tyler Technologies. Seconded, this isn't like.
This is.
Moved and seconded. All in fa, uh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. R C C.
So, we ask you to go get some bit for anyone who's been on that, I'll refer, but I'm going to move to approve the purchase of a new Xerox A seven-one-two-five M F P unit, number five thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars, with such funds to be paid for from Apple.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? Uh, it said on there, the fax board is optional, you don't need it, but, so that's what it is. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'm going to move to approve the hire of Chelsea Hacker Kerman as a full-time dispatcher at Faber Eight Nine B, effective November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, with a stat date. I don't understand this. Effective eighteenth, with stat date of the twenty-second, was that?
Uh, there was a period of time where we would start something effectively on that previous Saturday, but I was directed at one point that they couldn't physically start it until you actually approved the hire, which would be.
Yeah, because.
We used, we used, I think we used to go by consensus that we'd start them on Monday, then approve them on Tuesday, but somewhere along the line, that was possible, that was not proper, we had to wait until you were, you actually approved them, really started, case you said no.
Well, I, I guess, I guess technically you're right, just that it's kind of cumbersome, but nevertheless, okay, it's effective, effective November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, stat date November twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-three, which is tomorrow.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. Any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Quest, uh, Treasurer, request approval for reserve account transfers for, uh, F T twenty-three end of year for unorganized territories.
So I'm going to move to approve the reserve account transfers, F Y twenty-three end of year for the unorganized territories.
Moved and seconded. Monica.
That's good. It's just cleaning up the end of F Y twenty-three for U T.
Pretty clear?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. They're unanimous. Jail funding.
That's my question. Uh, I just want everyone, or you guys, to see that we've had a good year for interest in the general fund. The jail is not having a good year. So I'm checking with the auditor right now. I haven't received an answer from him. But I think we can probably help out the jail, at least get to the end of the year with some of these interest funds up to three hundred thousand dollars to assist them to get through the end of the year.
Well, it's a little fuzzy, but I thought we were capped how much we could contribute to the operation of the jail, Tim.
That's what the L D cap is, yes.
And why is this, why isn't this a violation of the L D moniker? It's, it's not technically raised by taxation, but is this, you think this is fast scrutiny?
We need something to pay the bills, but, but what, usually in the past, we had the one lump sum, the state gave you all their money upfront, and it was divvied out to the town, to the jail monthly. We got, we got behind, in September, they'd give us October payment, and we, but this year, we've and I never could put the budget in because of the finance, fiscal year budget from the state, because we got a county budget. Once it's approved, I can put it in. We don't have an approved budget as of yet, so I couldn't do my crash report for, um, June, July, and August. So to enact, the state to send me the money, I need to have those three months in. So I put in, well, I talked, talked to Michael, I put in what I proposed, knowing that I can go change the budget I entered into the crash system, once it's approved, and that would, that pre, that we should be getting that money, but now it's coming quarterly instead of yearly.
So are we, are we loaning the jail this money, Monica, or are we actually?
Um, we can, we can loan it to them, um, of their, their, what he's talking about is the F Y twenty-four funding, and in the month of October, we've already given, given them two quarters worth of that twenty-twenty-four funding, just to help them pay the bills.
Two, the, two, two funding is, is really from July first to the summer thirty-first, right?
Yes, yes, so.
They're already into, or have used up in summer thirty-first?
Yes.
We got some major medical expenses, that's, that's great.
So, uh, we can consider it a loan, and it can be, I, I, again, I'm waiting for an answer from the auditor. And we can, as we receive those, uh, those state funds, we can just keep them, keep them, which already, we've only received one of the quarters, we've already fronted them the second quarter, and we haven't received those funds yet because they were waiting for his reporting. So then we have two more quarters.
So, so the reason this happens is because of our disparity between our budget cycles.
Right, their fiscal year or calendar year, so I can't submit a budget. I'm submitting a calendar year budget into the fiscal year side, if things offset.
But it's worse than that, though, because
Right.
we, by the time we start our fiscal budget year, our funds have been approved. The problem with the state is, is they're starting the fiscal budget years, and that's in the budget hasn't, is that correct?
Yes.
So you're not going to get your money until that budget's approved, which now is generated, because it's, why is it still not approved, right?
Right, but I have placed, talked to Michael, I put in what I proposed into the budget, so it's showing a budget in the system. I'd have to talk to them, knowing that it could be changed, might have to modify it, which is something we can do all year long, can modify it anytime we want, need to modify it.
Well, I understand.
But submitting that, that's going to trigger their payment for this ordered payment a lot.
So I understand the payment on paper, but the actual funds, where are those? How do you get money enough to pay your bills?
He's been scraping on.
Right now, they've been giving us, I, what I said, we have your L D money, your taxation money to carry us through.
That was, they, they used up their twenty-twenty-three budgeted funds in September.
Oh, I see, so the money that we funded is getting you through the first half of the year until you get to say. Bill, I feel like we've had a shortfall. We lose some, uh, some benefits, I remember a couple of years ago. I feel like there's at least a hundred grand.
Mm-hmm.
That went over just.
This year is gonna be more than that.
Twenty nineteen or something like that.
So I mean, you see the sheet? It looks to me like it's like twenty thousand, we have three hundred and thirty?
Yes.
No, we got three hundred and ten thousand excess funds. Well, yeah, no, I'm not saying that we should use it, just saying we did the best. May I sure have this technique in some place to get things back to me this, as long as it's not going to cause a problem with the auditors.
That's right.
This is free money to us from our.
So essentially, if we were able to take it from our.
C B A in the past, then we should be able to take it from this account today? If that was scrutiny before, Monica, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, obviously care back to the auditor, so. That's a problem. Are we waiting for that, or do you need our approval?
I am. Um, I, I would ask for your approval or blessing, and then based on what the auditor says, if he's okay with it. They're running so, so short that we're, we're, we're basically gonna cover.
Do you need a number or just draw down these funds until you get the state money?
I would say, uh, as needed, yeah. To try, we, we won't even get the, well, we haven't received the second quarter funds. Uh, and we've already given them the second quarter funds, so then we, he needs to get his reporting done so that we can then move on to the third quarter funds, which would be for January through March.
And considering the, the health of this account, I'd say I'm fine with just tapping into it as you need it.
Okay.
I don't have a craft motion or just my general consensus? What do you think?
I think just, let's just speak and say to. Utilize the.
Yep.
Okay.
That's treasure, then we've been, you know, general consensus, you're committed to.
One. Okay.
Keep us updated, maybe.
Okay. Okay.
At some point, we will have to approve formally if they keep money.
Right. Try to check that with and to.
Well, one of the questions I have is, we, you, you can't put in your budget, you know, because of the disparity between the fiscal years, but can't you put in? You are operating under a budget. It just happens to be in a different cycle, so can't you put that dollar amount in?
But I didn't.
Is that what you did?
Yes, I did, I did. After, I have not in the past put in the final budget to tell us through by the, till we get the final approval from you saying this is our budget. Those are the final numbers I put in. This year, talking to Michael to trigger the payment, which all reports are done now, because I put in the, my proposed budget, I put in. And if something comes back and say, well, I need to change something, I'd go change it.
You did talk to them about that.
Yes, I talked to, yeah, I explained it.
Not like we just did.
Yeah, of course. Sorry, one minute.
Okay, so I, I think we understand.
So we have, we have put a budget in after I talked to them. Now they explained to them what was going on, why the delay was, because this is something that we've usually, we've had the money to carry us through until the budget was approved, and we put it in, and I did my reports following that.
It's, it's been tight. It's always been tight, um, getting them to December thirty first. Until the, until the county budget is approved, when we can start giving them their, their monthly allocation. Uh, this year has been especially tight because of medical.
Yeah.
Needs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I can prove we're not just spending money foolishly up there.
Oh, I know. Quit watching.
I, I also. And it's just, it's, it's tough. And everything's reported. They said they had triggered the payment. Hopefully they'll get that shortly. And then when the budget is approved, I'll, I'll go down line by line and make sure that everything is, is proper.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so, uh, we're already with the treasurer? Okay, Sheriff. Uh, first up is a bid opening for a civil process vehicle.
Yeah, that's so that we can, uh, replace that vehicle and sign that one. Turn it over to, um.
Okay, so we have one bid from.
I sent you two vendors. Yeah, well, I received one of that.
Yep.
Okay, so I open this or you open? I open. So we have one bid uh, for Maryland for fifty three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
What is it supposed to be?
It's a twenty twenty three Silverado fifteen hundred L T.
Chevrolet.
Chevrolet. Doesn't say extended cab, but.
That's what the, that's what the request was.
It's just, it's just like your forehead, right?
Yeah, it's a regular, so fifteen hundred Silverado, four wheel drive, short crew. Black.
Right.
I need to know all the others. Vehicles, you didn't see what selection.
With a ten speed automatic transmission.
Wrong, Garland. Garland?
Yeah. Yes.
Price of.
Fifty three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay, so I want to move to approve the purchase of the twenty three, it's twenty three?
Yes.
Move to approve the purchase of two thousand twenty three Chevrolet pickup of Downs Auto with the price of fifty three thousand one hundred and fifty dollars to pay for it from our.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Michael, do you recall if we did a formal motion to transfer the vehicle? You just transferred it over to the A C O? We did, we did take the action.
On, on the A C O line you did, but.
You think it's necessary to do this or we just, we just, just like.
Yeah, well, I mean, it just goes on. How, how you want it.
I don't care. It's understood that that vehicle will be retained by the county. Another department. You guys want that out, what we hear, right?
That's right.
Because we won't have any. You sign this or I sign? You. Or Michael, who signed this?
Well, normally if it was a like an accord or agreement, buyer's agreement or whatever, then it would be the chair.
Okay, so you want me to sign?
Hey, some of those ones where it doesn't matter to me as long as you authorize it to be purchased.
Give us a check. No, it, 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 it's just, I don't, I don't think so. Okay, well, he's doing that stuff. You, you want to, uh, the Vogts School is interested in one of your retiring cruisers?
They are, Commissioner, uh, Alan Smith, who does, uh, runs the program up there, Pro John, I believe. And they have a old, old, old Crown back, broken windows and all types of things. They wanted to know if we had a cruiser that we were disposing on. Whether we would contribute that or donate that to the Vogts School so they can use it for their law enforcement program. I put this on there just for discussion to see if the commissioners were into paying that. We got a value. It's a two thousand fifteen Ford, um, cruiser. It's got approximately a hundred and forty five thousand miles on it. It needs a fair amount of, of work. Um.
Couldn't be any worse than that A C O vehicle you gave us.
Well.
Oh, God, that thing. How much did we spend on that?
I mean, so I haven't seen the bill, so.
Oh, nothing. You want to be sitting down, you get it. We should have gotten that one. You could have had a certified mechanic by the time we got working on that.
This one is, um, according to P J, he came down, or someone came down, looked at it, and said between four thousand forty five hundred. The vehicle won't be registered. It won't be on the road. It'll be just used, uh, at the Vogts School. So I just put this on there as a request.
I need to get rid of it. Um. This, this is just like my client, I, I really would like to be able to donate these, but I guess you guys are interested in doing that.
Are we talking H C T C?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah.
Yes.
I, I was. I have to charge it.
Yeah.
Oh, well, I, I, I wanted to give it to the.
Yeah.
But I mean, we did that before. You said no, don't sell it.
Yeah, no.
So, but to hear that John, and I'm going to move to approve the.
Yeah.
What do we prove the transfer? The donation? Donation of one two thousand fifteen Ford Cruiser to the Elton Vocational School at Oshad.
As outlined by the sheriff.
Seconded.
Well, he outlined what you did.
What it was.
Yeah, what it was.
Uh, two thousand Ford Cruiser.
Two thousand fifteen.
Uh, two thousand fifteen Ford Cruiser as outlined sheriff.
Here. This is again be one of those ones where when we come back a month from that one, uh, somehow our number of cars that we've authorized to buy has now increased by one or anything, right? This is all part of our grand plan, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Good.
And.
All right, so my motion, I don't know what the settlement, to approve the donation of one two thousand fifteen Ford Cruiser is outlined by sheriff to the Elton Vocational School. Seconded.
H C T. Okay. You moved it seconded. H C T C is who it is, right? So it's that balance where it's okay, sure, just put H C T C.
Well, handle. H C.
T C.
E C. Okay, John, you all set with that?
Yeah.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. That's a very nice gesture, just to support that movement.
Okay, you need approval for six months law enforcement contract. So I'm going to move to approve a six month law enforcement contract with the town. Criminal effective January first, two thousand twenty.
And just to comment that they wanted six months because they, they get them through their town meeting so that they can go forward for the time, so that, that's why it's six months instead of traditionally eight years. And you should have a copy of that.
Yeah. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Sheriff, you all right?
I'm okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had a couple of things I want to bring up this week on, please, it's not, you know, first of all, I didn't realize that we were gonna that Mary Ann was going to have permission to advertise for a whole position. I'd like to have the same thing for administrative assistant position for civil, that we can post those in-house and outside house, so we can get working on, on doing those.
But is Michelle staying until, Michelle, is some of that period, uh, are you? Are you staying until March first?
I said vacation, I'm just vacation.
Vacation.
When is your last?
December twenty ninth.
Pardon?
December twenty ninth.
Yeah, was it?
Little early on. Okay. So I think that's why I said we, uh. Uh, John, how you feel? It's on the agenda, but how do you feel about?
Yeah, we're we're not hiring. We're, yeah.
Right, just give me.
Yeah.
Okay, motion. To approve a sheriff to advertise for the spring. This. In-house. And outside. That's sufficient.
That's with me.
Yeah, so it's pretty, motion of your authorizing H R.
Same as.
Approve the sheriff to advertise for administrative assistant in-house and outside agencies.
So that's moved. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Any further discussion or questions?
A union policy, you can only post it in-house for ten days, and then you can post it outside.
Is the contract different than the county's personnel policy, Shell?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
It states in the contract, you can only, you have to post it in-house for ten days before you can advertise outside.
Before, because the county personnel policy allows both.
Correct.
So there is a difference?
Correct.
So.
According to C B A.
We'll publish it.
Yeah, so maybe you could throw.
I mean, so I will advertise it for ten, in-house for ten days, and then it'll go out to the general public on indeed or.
So your motion should, can just add on, uh, ensuring it's consistent with C B A or something like that.
Approve the sheriff to advertise for administrative assistant.
Well, H R does that, right?
Yes.
Okay. So your motion.
Wait a minute, H R might do the physical work, but H R shouldn't be advertising for a position until we, till we get a request from the department here to take over to the position. So whatever happens behind the scenes between he and H R, we should be approving the sheriff's request for positions.
Okay. I wasn't even wanting to man things, yeah.
Well, it's not semantics because worst case scenario, you want to put a hold on this family and H R says, no, we're not advertising. I've been here, should be making an ultimate decision when, and if we do that, making that request. My motion is for the sheriff, to approve the sheriff to advertise for an outside administrative assistant in-house. That's my motion. Seconded.
So it's only in-house or not?
Oh, wait, I, I, I'll, let me expand on that. In-house for ten days and then outside agencies after.
How about saying? To maintain consistency with C B A or something.
Okay. C B A.
Just because I don't have the C B A in front of me and I don't know what it says. I was just gonna make a, like.
Okay, to move the sheriff to advertise for administrative assistant in-house for ten days and outside agencies consistent with the C T.
Moved and seconded. Everybody's clear what they're voting on? Does that accomplish what we need to accomplish?
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Last thing.
So just a second, just to clarify. That, that was just from administrative assistant. You, you mentioned civil.
I did, but I'm not going to worry about the civil debt until, first of all, this. We just wanted to be sure. Take care of one thing right now. And I just wanted to share with you that I had a conversation with Director Dischaddens from M D E A yesterday. We had a very lengthy conversation about possibility of filling that position, one of those two positions that would be opened down to M D E A with state funds. And after a lengthy period of time, we came up with an agreement that after him looking things over, he did not have money in his budget this year. Then new budget kicks in July one next year, and he would, um, put it in the budget to fund that position that we, that, uh, Commissioner Plack had discussed. So they will fully fund that position and as long as we live up to our commitment to fund the one position through the county. So we have that agreement. That would only have to be, I know we've talked that that's not going to be in the budget. It was one of those things where we want to find money for something that somehow or whatever. But I just wanted to know that I had that conversation. I do have, um, an agreement with Director Dischaddens. He's going to send me their contracts so we can look at it. But that would come online, uh, July next year.
So are you saying that they will have the money, so the position starts in July?
Correct, they'll budget it, and then it would go forward from there.
But I would have to go through their budget process.
Correct.
And which he is not in control of. He's, he's just in control of what he requests.
That's right. So, that took the trial with me. That was nice. That was good. I, I did put much faith in him to do it, but we went back and forth and we agreed that we need to have those positions and they agree that they will take care of that, so. Just like, just for informational, when we pick on, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, I want to make this. All of it is, is a problem by. There is. Just. A, you might not get money, and B, I don't want to commit out funds until I see that position filled. Then say, I'm going to fund it. Nobody steps up to fill that position. So we don't, we don't contribute anything until that position is stated as funded and filled. Then you were filling hours of money. That's my position. Then you were filling hours away, but that's my position.
Yeah, funded through other means, not the budget.
I mean, that's pretty much the way I understood it.
Yeah. And I just want it clear today, that I was still waiting for state to fund a third position, once that's funded and fit. Fill the fourth one, and then we'll fund it. Okay. Okay, uh, onto the commissioners, personnel policy amendment leaves from related staff reductions, courthouse annex, airport closure.
So I presented the commissioners with your revisions based on our current personnel policy, and the current personnel policy essentially divides staff reductions, catastrophic incidents, uh, into essentially two different things, an adverse incident and a catastrophic. So essentially what I did was kinda designed this so it's clear that there's actually two different types of events, not one, that could then be interpreted that applies to both of these, so under adverse incident, that essentially is, uh, like a snowstorm or something that travel is becomes hazardous. Non-essential employees with consent of the department head, they take their work time off without pay, or left use their group benefit time, and that essentially has been in place. But whether that's been an adverse incident consideration, or whether it's been a catastrophic incident where we actually closed the office against a little bit of a gray area, so uh, what is proposed here is to, again, have an adverse incident, catastrophic incident defined whereby it indicates what happens in terms of staff reduction, that courthouse annex, and the airport. The only real major changes, again, is, one, clarifying the name of each, but two, uh, the big change is under the catastrophic incidences, so when there's like a really big blizzard, or a really bad storm, potentially a large accumulation of ice, things like that. Essentially propose removing the section with the courts, the courts last year, it made their decisions, however they made their decisions, and then it was explained that we essentially fell in line with the courts. We had a couple days where it snowed a few lakes, and then the rest of the day it was fine weather, so it didn't really seem prudent or accurate, so this basically kinda transitions that authority, makes it clear that that's gonna rest with the county, and in particular, right now, as it's been set up in the past, will rest with the county administrator after consultation with the commission chair, and however the two of, two of them work that out, so.
Do we, excuse me, do we have that information, I see the essential, but I.
Yeah, it was in, it was in the stock, it was in the top, it was sent to you.
It was not, uh. What's, what's it under, Michael?
Also, it's been under commission stuff, but let me, it's the fake, you'd have it in your other binder anyway, because I haven't changed a lot, but. Essentially, it is the other stuff that we discussed previously. Um, so again, really, they're taking out section A under catastrophic incident, so county administrator would has consulted with the courts, including the district attorney office, who've indicated their closing will be closing, so essentially remove that from the criteria. Doesn't mean that I still won't communicate with the court, so we know what each entity is doing and preparing to do, but just because the court's closed doesn't no longer means that the county offices have to close as well, so we could make that independent determination. Uh, the other part of this is, is to also clarify that the adverse incident, so it might be snowing, everybody has a different level of comfort as to how, what they like to drive in, and, and what they use to come back and forth, but it's clarifying, which is what I was told, is the original intent is that it can be snowing, and there can be accumulation of some snow and stuff, but the intent behind closing offices and, and then giving non-essential employees, uh, paid time off essentially for the storm is intended for significant storms, and that's the other part of what it's really trying to do, is make it clear that you can still consult with your department as an employee, and they can develop a system to allow certain individuals to take time off or not come in during the storm, or leave early, but you have to use your own time, only not use your own time when the county sought me that decision to close the county office.
So when, if something is happening, snowing, you have not declared a catastrophic incident, and, and, and the department, and the, and the employee wanted to stay home because they they come home. Then it's, it's considered an adverse incident, you don't have to declare an adverse.
No.
It's an adverse incident unless you declare it.
Unless it's declared catastrophic, because the only time that we would actually consider it catastrophic is obviously if I specifically say a four, if in conjunction with maintenance, you know, we have a water name break or something like that.
So you don't get involved in adverse.
So adverse incident, if it's just snowing, and an employee wants to go to their, direct, yeah, they can work out whatever it is, as, as long as it's understood that the county's not paying for it. They have to use their own time or not get paid for the hours that they're not in the office. And, and like you said, for the most part, it really didn't change as significantly, it's just clarifying and, and eliminating, hopefully reducing the opportunity for redundancies here that could lead to missing directions.
Now, in this document.
Yeah.
Right now. We're paying time and a half for an adverse incident.
Proposing for another engine.
But I thought with an adverse incident, the, if they.
Oh, no, not an adverse, it's closed, sorry, yeah, no, it's not adverse, no, we're not paying anything for that.
It says here, closed to access public and subsequently non-essential operations due to an adverse incident, that really should now say catastrophic.
Catastrophic, yeah.
That should say catastrophic.
So we'll, definitely change it.
But that's not the policy.
No, that's not why you have any, yeah. So this is what's in progress.
Yeah, all right, and I'm fine with that.
Okay, so.
Do we need a motion to that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna move to accept the recommended changes to the county's personnel policy article sixteen related to storm closures. Seconded.
As presented.
Oh, that's sad.
Okay, so.
Recommended, recommended changes.
Yeah. Okay, everybody's clear? Moved and seconded, any further discussion, everybody's clear what we're voting on, I know we'll. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very thank you.
So, thank you.
What is this then? That's later?
Yeah.
Okay, rehire and return to work policy amendments. So, just to frame this a little bit, we have a policy, and then, uh, Commissioner Clark proposed some, uh, changes. Marion, if you wanna start off, or Commissioner Clark?
Well, yeah, I would like to, Marion, if you don't mind. We presently do have a newly created.
Approved.
Approved. Retire, return to work policy. Paul, I'll say that, first of all, Marion brought this sometime prior to September nineteenth, I don't remember when it was, gave us a preview, then came back on September nineteenth with the final draft, and you were absent at the meeting, you were not here.
No.
You weren't, you weren't once here, we had a discussion, a lengthy discussion, and touched on some of the issues in that, and then approved the policy as presented. Well, quite honestly, gentlemen, uh, we were asleep at the wheel when we approved that policy. And in reviewing it more depth, I've tried to accomplish four things. First of all, I wanna retain our sole responsibility and authority for determining who would be hired as an employee. This policy doesn't give us that. Second of all, I want to retain the right of the employee to appeal and ask for a review to a higher authority if they're dissatisfied with an action of a lower authority, which this policy doesn't give. Third, I wanna spell out in this policy guidelines for what pay and benefits would be granted under a return to work, which this policy doesn't do. And then finally, there are some clarifications and more housekeeping issues, because I think in some cases, that, uh, some of this policy conflicts with other portions of the policy. So I'd like to take my suggested revisions, go through, and you'll see that what I'm trying to accomplish under those four objectives, hopefully it is covered under these. Under these amendments.
Okay, so, it, it sounds like what you're outlining, you have a document, and you've made some changes to some, to a few sections, and you'd just like to go through them, and then have Marion.
Well, I need to ask Marion, because as I understand it, some of this document is predicated upon policies by main purers, correct?
Correct.
And I need to make sure that my suggestions are consistency with the policies in main purers, so as we go through, I need to, uh, I need to, to be sure to check with Marion, to make sure that we're not violating these main purers policies.
Okay, so, uh, so that sounds like a plan attack, uh, how, one question I had that's, you know, related to main purers, and it deals with quite a few sections, Marion, is everybody in main purers, I mean, is this?
No.
So, so this policy addresses main purers and nothing, these amendments address main purers, nothing else, when main purers is, could or could not be involved in this, right?
Well, um, main purers has specific rules for when you retire, and if you're gonna return to work. The only other retirement program that we currently have is V O Y A, uh, which is just an investment group, and that's people opt out of main purers. Um, but these, this particular position has everything to do with those people who are in main purers, would like to retire from the county, and then return to work, they have, had very specific separation, um, in order to do that.
Marion, excuse me, can you draw down your V O Y A contributions continuing to work? You have to separate employment to get those.
You do not have to separate them, as far as I know.
Okay, so this is really only.
This is really only the state retirement system.
This is, this, this policy will only be eligible to those people who qualify for full retirement benefit from main purers.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay, so, the, the, Marion, did you wanna, before we get started going through this, did you wanna touch on anything, or should we?
Um, well, I, Commissioner Clark asked me to respond to some questions that I did send to you guys, um, yesterday.
Well, yeah, but that's, that's what.
That's on the subsequent, that's on the, the next item.
Correct, but, but one of the things that was, um, I do have concerns about is that if an individual is retiring, and they're at a specific pay level, that stepping them down will defeat the purpose of the program itself. And that will not encourage people who are, um, have experience in the county to remain with the county, um, and so there kind of defeats the purpose of the entire item.
Yes.
So that's the, so that's my biggest concern, is that.
And, and we're gonna get to that when we get to that section.
Yeah, so that's, I mean, so my concerns for that, that, that's, some of the other is just really language and semantics.
Yeah.
Uh, which is fine, because I did have the original, when I put this together, um, I did send it to main purers to make sure I wasn't breaking any of their rules, so that they would have a clarification, and so that I was going to make sure that it was legal according to their needs as well, because I knew that that was important.
So specifically, what, everything that you just touched on, when we get to section, section four C, we're gonna talk about. Uh, okay.
Just try to sit down while you're doing that?
No, I, I need you there, because I can see obvious issues that I created.
Yeah, okay.
So basically, if we can start through my suggested changes.
Yeah, so, let's look at section one.
And section one, as I understand, you don't have to come back the next working day, it can be a separation. Is that correct?
It has to be, it can be a minimum of twenty-four hours, it can be longer.
Okay, so.
Okay, so you, you said minimum, but it could be a maximum, so there has to be a twenty-four hour break.
A minimum, yes, correct.
Minimum, okay, great.
Okay, so, what you, what Commissioner Clark has proposed is, and the separation between their retirement date and their retire does not exceed thirty days.
And I just, you know, I mean, we, yes, I just figured that we should have some, this, the, should not be ending for six months or something like that, just that, that retiring, return to work passed the curve at any certain time.
Is that thirty days?
I don't think it matters, I mean, I think that if somebody leaves our employment, they retire, and they go to work, um, at Home Depot for two years, and then they wanna come back and work for us, I'd like to make sure that that's an opportunity.
And that's what I'm opposed to, I'm opposed to that, that is a clear separation of employment, that person is not, two years employed somewhere else, they have lost the training, they've lost the updates, they've lost the contacts, that's why I think to, to get the benefit, tenured employee that's where the point should go back soon enough.
Well, it, I'm, maybe I'm misunderstanding, so my, what I'm saying is that, um, any employee who wants to return has an opportunity to return, you're just specifically speaking about return to work, and that you don't want the gap to be greater than thirty days.
Under this program.
Under this program, that.
Oh, we could hire somebody two years later, absolutely, no problem there, but we gotta be under this program.
Right, so that, so when they retire, they will have to state that their planning on returning to work at that time, and if they wanna take a, a week off in between, that's fine, but yes.
Later in the policy, under the agreement that is all spelled out, we have breaking employment from the time they retire to the time they return, it can be within thirty days, and we could have it less if you think it should be less, but my only question is, kinda like in Michelle's case, uh, somebody, because I don't really understand all the stuff, like how you guys do vacation, you're recruiting, how that all works, and like.
There are four different versions of it.
So like, when you, when you retire.
Yes.
Do people get paid out on their vacation?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, and how about like a recruit sick time?
Ninety days.
Okay, so I just, I, I only wanna make sure that, like, I really don't have any problem with this idea of the thirty days, it's just like, is it gonna mess up anything with, uh, people getting their, uh, vacation benefits at, uh, at sick time?
No, I don't believe so.
Well, and as we get through this, John, you will see, and I might as well say this right now, uh, one of my intents is to recognize portions of the C B A, the collective bargaining agreement that we can apply as a reasonable measure without being too extreme, and ignoring others because they. and ignoring others because they just don't fit. Because we know that the CBA was never written with retire, return to work provision. That program was never in place, so they never envisioned that happen. So whenever it's possible, I try to incorporate language that we could apply reasonably. And you'll see that as we go through. So do we want, we want to reduce that 30 days to something less?
No, that 30 days makes sense to me. I just wanted to make sure that it makes sense.
That, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, so 30 days is okay. Now, section 3A is?
You have this, right?
I do, but it's not in front of me.
Would you like a copy?
Yes, yes.
My staple, you have something, my staple. And while she's making that, Mary Ann, the section 3A is where I want to make the final approval of the return to work responsibility.
Well, here's why I think that makes sense. I'm not saying I necessarily agree, but it's, we are the only ones that can hire people, right?
Well, yeah, but the problem is, is that we can hire, but if we don't change this policy, we don't have to not hire. If you understand what I'm saying. So under the old policy, Mary Ann can recommend, can can recommend us that we, or request us to hire somebody that she's got an agreement for.
Yeah.
But if she denies that person the request, we don't have the ability to overrule that denial under this policy. She has final authority to decide not to grant the request. And so what's happening is that we've lost that authority and responsibility of deciding who can and who cannot work for them.
Well, I would argue that we didn't lose it because it's law, but.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. If I cause retire, you come back to work.
Yes.
And Mary Ann, for whatever reason, says, no, I do not approve your request.
Yes.
You can't be a list, go away, retire if you want, you're not coming back. We have lost the ability to say, we want this guy back.
I would contend that we've never lost that, because that's law.
Wait a minute, that's not law. That's not law. We do not have the right under this policy or whatnot.
I'm not talking about this policy. I'm talking about, that's what we're arguing the same point. By putting the, by putting this in here, I think we're being consistent with law. This, this policy never prevented us from hiring somebody back or hiring someone, whether it's back or not, in my opinion.
This policy never, never took away our right to approve hiring and back.
That's right.
The policy took away our right for employees who would like to come back, and it's been denied by a subordinate employee because we can't overrule it. And this takes care of that. We now have the exclusive right to this.
Change in language is fine.
So do I. Also in here, Mary Ann.
So we're looking at, where we are? 3A?
Yeah, 3A.
And we're, we're removing the approval of the human resource manager and changing that to recommendation. So process would, would allow you to go through the process, and if you feel that this employee is warrants return to work, then recommend that to us.
So that's fine?
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, I mean, functionally, that's what we do anyway. And the reason we came back, of course, is because it was state statute. So.
Yeah, but, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Now, the other, this is another one of these, the next portion that's underlined is, no, A. The last part, sentence A is here because if you go to the last page under seniority, and you look at the original policy. The original policy says an employee entering into the program shall have the position and seniority they help. Well, that sounds like you can only have a senior position or senior, which we know is not the case because in the policy to start with, it says that may, may retire or return to work in different department within, okay. So anyways, my point is, I just want to clarify that and tell me if this is wrong, Mary Ann. A return, a retirees may return to their previous position, another position within the previous department or a new department. Is that correct?
Yes, that is returning to work in the county in general.
Right. So that, so that.
We're good with that line.
That sent, that language is, is, is okay.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm not sure, Mary Ann, in C, not sure, I'm not really sure what was the intent of the original language. But read, read down through, this recommendation continues the process for a pre-arranged agreement. I'm not really sure what that original, what's it mean when they said the, when they said this will constitute for a pre-arranged agreement? Is there some, anything wrong with, with what I have said in the last sentence of C, Mary Ann? Is the only purpose of that sentence to inform them that they get a 10% IRS tax?
Yes.
If that's
And that's, and that's that law.
Right, if that's the only intent of that sentence, then it should be okay.
I agree.
Okay. Now, D is the issue of an employee having the right to, for a review if the human resource manager or whatnot denies the request. And here, it simply says that they can ask for the county manager to review it. He's unable to resolve it, and the matter comes before to us for final resolution to the issue.
I have no problem with that because functionally, that's what's happening. The only problem I have is you've got to take the he or she out of the, the, it should say, they can request a review by the county manager. And if the manager is unable to, instead of he, the correct.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Functionally, that's what was happening.
Correct.
Yeah.
No. Functionally, what was happening in the original document is that she said, no.
I didn't say, I, I'm not.
Oh, that's not what you mean?
I'm not taking a little line.
Okay. And I don't know what the eligibility date thing really meant, Mary Ann. Adding the sentence that official rehire date should be determined, does that change what your intent was in, in E?
It has to do with consultation with the department heads to make sure that the individual is, even though they would like to do a retire, rehire, is that something that the department head would like to have? And then determine a date that would be appropriate for them to return to work so that that is all aligned together, so that nobody's out of sync.
Okay, so, and that can be addressed in the terms of the agreement.
Your, your language is fine.
So moving down to section four.
Okay, so, 4C, right?
4C.
Okay, so, I have no problem with the language except five, which is, I think, what Mary Ann was touching on. You know, when she started.
And this is a case where the union contract allows for the department head to ask for a C if they can justify it has additional benefits or what do you call it. But they can also ask for an H if it's, if he's getting individual from another department, and the individual has that amount of time in service with that department, and we approve that. So this C and H requirement here is consistent with the existing contract. And here's the problem. At one moment, we're talking about this individual as a retiree. Now, if he's getting done, you'll, you'll see that we have to pay him, pay him off and everything. The next minute, we're talking about him as a new employee. And then on top of that, there's times that we want to treat him as if that was never a break in the employment. And see, that it almost depends on which benefit we're talking about, which philosophy you want to apply. And this is a case where this is a new employee. If it wasn't, we wouldn't have to approve it. So if we're talking about a new employee, then that new employee should be, should be controlled by the contract, which says you're a C unless you have qualified for H, the recommendation of the department head. Now, an H, an H is only four steps below to the top. So we're only talking about a 12% reduction in pay from top pay. If they were getting top pay and had to go back to H, we're only talking 12%. And somewhere along the way here, gentlemen, there's got to be some advantage to the county. I mean, Mary Ann has done a good job in taking care of the employee, but who's looking out after the tax dues? I think that's us. And occasionally, we should be looking at an opportunity that we are losing because we're hiring an employee and entertaining a paid top pay. Well, I, I hope that is, to me, it seems like, I kind of agree, I agree with some of the philosophy there. But I also feel like we're kind of getting a little bit into the weeds on specifics, where it really should be that a person could get rehired, you know, up to their current pay. But essentially, I feel like in the end, the discretion of this needs to happen. HR and the department head will discuss what they, what they see as the appropriate pay level is coming back to rehire, and then you'll come to us to approve it or deny it. We can get it go well. No. And what I'm trying to do, gentlemen, is trying to reduce getting into the weeds after the fact. I'm trying to give HR guidelines now so that they can create an agreement that comes to us, that we don't sit here and change every other line because we're getting into the weeds. She has this, she has the guidelines that I'm proposing, and it works within those guidelines. The odds that we're pointing to, and say, no, I think this guy should be a, a D instead of an H. No, that's not going to happen. But if we've got a guy that's a top A, she wants to continue top A, and we have the ability to pay him something less by policy, now are we going to get into the weeds on whether or not this guy should be an H, should be an I, or whether he should be an H or a C? So, to a certain degree, I see what you're saying, but I also think you've already injected ourselves into the weeds when we've changed the language to say, oh, this is, so it's kind of like, well, you kind of want it both ways. So to me, it's like, just get into the weeds. We, we have it. If we didn't have a retired, if this was a brand new, we would be in the weeds. That's just what I want to continue to do, to the weeds. Now, before you get all teary-eyed over this point in time, just losing 12% by coming back and whatnot, consider the fact that a top paying lieutenant leaving December of 23 is going to get a check for over $30,000. I don't feel too bad when we cut his pay from I back to H after I've given him a check of $30,000.
Well.
I'm just telling you, I'm just saying that, you know, and how is a taxpayer, you just gave this guy check for $30,000, and now you're going to continue to give him a pay when a new employee, we've got, we have C and an H.
Well, the, the thing is here, new employee, we would have the expenses of the retire, of the, so there is a cost savings to the county. You know, maybe not on the wage line, but certainly on the benefits line.
Correct.
So.
Just to interject something here too, the step H is, I know, is missing something, it's only allowed in one unit.
Yeah.
The other two unions and non-union employees can't do that. You can only go to step C. So you are, for this purpose, maybe what you're looking at right now. But going forward, you're either going to have to modify those other two agreements, which I think is why you're trying to stay away from anyway, or, and also change the personnel policy, or you have to understand that basically you're allowing one entity, one unit here to have the H, but that doesn't apply to everybody.
So are you saying that if, if we had an employee in ICC that wanted to retire?
Right now, we haven't given that provision.
They, they could only get step C.
Whatever would be in their agreement, which I understand is only specified, you just did that with the law enforcement union, isn't in the other agreements.
So you're saying we couldn't pay top?
So you, well, again, that gets back to how you understand this agreement, because you had the union rep sitting here saying, you guys figure it out. I'm out of it at this point.
What do you mean, for the retired?
So for this retire, return to work thing here again, and they, he didn't want to interject into making recommendations or suggestions. If you assume that they, I mean, even make this work, and you assume the union is going to expect you to abide by the terms of the CBA, then, yeah, you don't have authority to do anything right now.
And I'm saying that this is a case where we have to try to follow the CBA, but it doesn't fit. And in order to make this apply to everybody, everybody should get the ability for top pay or the ability up to age, or whatever. Not one unit will, no.
No, well, that's what I'm saying, but that is, it's written right now that it only, based on the contracts. Now, I mean, the, the union guy just walked in, he could tell you whether or not the union file on behalf of other employees, if you did either one of those steps. But I'm just saying, right now, as written, I only believe that the one per agreements and per personnel policy, you only can apply that H process with the one unit.
And if that's the case, then you can only apply C to the other two.
To the other two and the non.
Right. So, I mean, you can't give top pay to anybody on the other side.
I mean, I'm, I'm agreeing, I'm assuming, I'm, I'm following your logic right now, that unless the union was consulted and agreed to do that with all three units, and it was built into, whether it's sign letter or whatever, then arguably, the position of being able to return them to exactly where they are could be up for debate or discussion or reason.
Joe, I, somebody said, you said, I don't want to get involved in this return to higher policy that you're getting into.
Well, I mean, to the extent of until you know what you're doing, I can't violate the contract. I've, I've seen two or three different versions of it.
But here's the thing, do you consider this person a new hire or an existing employee or what?
Not the way, the way it looks like it's written, it isn't, no, it's not here. It's not, doesn't look like a new, new hire. The one I looked at looked like it is exactly what it says it is, a rehired employee. Because as I understand it, you also have a different contribution rate for main purs, which is in the collective bargain, which we only, we don't, so it would need to be addressed somehow.
Well, and that's the problem, Joe, and I said this when we first started, that my intent, as we developed the policy, was to try to follow the contracts whenever possible. But, you know, as well as I do, the, the contract is never developed with this retire, return to work program.
And I've been very clear, that's, that's not the intent of what I do, except for making sure there have been occasions where you need to do something and it facilitates a need at a certain point in time. You make, you make something work. But no, that's not. We look, we, we negotiated retirement benefits, we look to bring new people in.
But if you knew, if you, main pur says you must retire. Not only that, you must pay off all the benefits, group benefits and whatnot. And state law says that if you're going to hire somebody, it takes commissioner's approval to hire, and so that's being brought to us for approval. That, to me, is a clear break in employment. And this rehire has a lot more to do with a new hire or an employee and less to do with, with rehiring an ex-employee. Because we could rehire an ex-employee two years down the road, but they wouldn't qualify for all these benefits. They would be still treated as a new one, right?
Correct.
Right? So we should be treating as often as we can this person, this employee coming back under the rehire program as a new employee as best we can in hopes that, what we want to do is a new hire outside the law enforcement is up to a C. In law enforcement, it could be up to an H. Mary Ann is arguing for top pay. Mary Ann is arguing for top pay.
No, she's not arguing.
Mary Ann, Mary Ann, stick around.
No, she's arguing for.
The level of pay that the individual was getting when they retired.
At that time. And.
Which may or may not be top.
If they got, if they got.
Correct.
If they had 25 years of employment, they were top pay. How could, how could you not have an employee who qualifies for full benefits not get a top of that? So I think you can, for the most part, these retirees are going to come back in full pay.
Right now, you have a contract that if you were to bring them back, your contract allows for lateral entry.
Lateral transfer.
Lateral transfer, so, so you would, you could. But that's not what we're looking at, you're looking at somebody with, and I do understand, uh, Chris is in this case, the, the position that, hey, I'm experienced, I should. What's the difference, it actually would cost the county less in contribution to the, uh. Main peers, there is money. So I'm, I don't object to any of that at all. If there's a need there, it does raise.
A need for what, Joe?
For employees.
For employees, you need to hire somebody with that experience, uh, you prefer not to lose them, that would be the intent there, the others.
And that's, that's why, that, that is a benefit, we're just talking about what level of pay are they going to come back?
Yeah, right now, the contract, I mean, you would need to work something out, but I, and if you want to work something out, propose something.
So basically, the language in law enforcement that we just agreed to the most recent one. As we understand it, doesn't necessarily appear in the other two, but if the county was to get together with you and, and. Try to get a side letter agreement or something like that, then you'd be. But right now, technically.
Right now, I'm actually here for the.
Well, I get.
The, the, the other contract.
Technically, you would, you might have an issue with agreeing for, for one unit at a certain level, but then telling another unit that they couldn't be hired at that level.
Yeah, and it would have to be resolved in such a way that it doesn't violate anybody, even in the one unit, you can't, that's why we need.
Okay, so I'm going to try to reel this back in because we're talking in circles. Uh, I contend that item five is, should not be there. And here's what I'm basing my contention on. Uh, A, I think it muddies the water with the different CBAs. B, I think that having somebody come back at their. Current level of pay actually helps the county and we are saving money. And the reason is that they are more likely to stay than they would go somewhere else, because if they're going to go somewhere else, they're probably going to be getting that pay. So I see the benefit of, of it. And I understand you don't, and I just want to settle this somehow.
Well, and, and with all due respect. I cannot agree with your contention. And I, I use the existing request we have in hand as an example. I defy Chris Thorne to retire today. Walk out to the law enforcement community in Hancock County. And get paid next January 1st, $91,000 a year, company cap. 200 hours of sick time, three days of personal time, family plan, I mean, a, uh, single subscriber health insurance paid by the county. That job does not exist, if he ever found it.
He's, he's getting, the health insurance he's getting through.
Retired.
Retire, nevertheless, he'd, he'd have to get that somewhere else, you said that he'd leave and go somewhere else. Puppy coat. There is no place that he can leave and get something that he's getting right now, nearly, and if it was, the competition for that would be severe.
I, I'd like to just interject that this is done to individuals, but to an overall population of employees. And our goal, um, and my goal in human resources is to, to. Um, maintain good employees who are doing their job, who have received good marks from their supervisors. Um, happy to come through and have the commissioners look at that individual again, but want to make sure that that person is being treated fairly. Um, this is, again, for, uh, employee line, not just specific individuals.
Look, but in this, let's take this case as an example of Mr. Clark, just. We're not providing him with health, that single subscriber health insurance, he's getting that through his retirement, whether he's, comes back or not, is that correct?
That is correct.
So, so we're not paying. But so that's a, that.
I mean, we pay our portion of it.
Yes.
And, but honestly, even though I've been arguing for ways to save some money on this, you know. As a new employee, a full-time new employee in Hancock County, he should have the option of, of two, a family employee. Because here we go again, you want to treat him as an existing employee, you want to treat him as, as, you know, been here for 19 years. And all of a sudden, you're denying him the basic health insurance benefit that everybody else in county, full-time employee, county government gets.
He's getting it through his retirement.
No, he's, he gets, he gets a single subscriber plan.
Correct, for himself.
He's a full-time, full-time employee in Hancock County and who's being denied family health insurance. So, I mean, you're so inconsistent with what you want to do in one case and, and, and what you're doing in another.
All the retiring plan is a single subscriber.
Nevertheless, he's not, he's, he's coming back as a full-time employee, and that's the frigging, it's that one minute you're talking about retiring, the next minute you're talking about a full-time employee. And. It seems like, I don't know why, everybody wants to be so generous, but nevertheless.
I would suggest you hold that thought until the generous part, until the next meeting with that manager.
Would you understand, so, okay, so, so is your expectation then? Is your expectation that he would be getting, and this is a question from Mary Ann.
Yeah.
Is your expectation that he would be getting his retirement health benefit? And a family? No.
No, she's denying him family.
Yes.
That he should have had. As a full-time employee. No.
Well, this is a very specific of people who can get this retirement.
And that's the trade-off here, that's why I have no trouble.
Choosing to do it.
That's why I have no trouble with this lang- with this language not being here, because to me, it's clearly spelled out that he's getting. Is a retirement benefit and not.
I, I don't see it. I can tell you right now, if the case before us, spouse in this case, didn't have health insurance from their employee. Chris Thorne would never agree to a single subscriber health insurance. So you're seeing that in the present agreement, because the employee can live with it. The next employee who has a family, his wife doesn't work and whatnot, is going to think twice before he retires and takes another job, knowing he's lost his family health insurance.
Agreed.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a.
Why are you reading?
Because then he shouldn't retire.
There has to be, there needs to be a benefit to a person to retire and become rehired, and that's what we're trying to work on.
And denying him family health insurance if they needed it is not a benefit to the employee, and it's not consistent with the, with the, uh, CBA or the county's personnel policy. So I mean.
Well, right now, under the CBA, you'd be obligated to provide.
Well, they're not going to get it under this policy.
No, I'm telling you, on open enrollment, if he's a union member right now, right? So that's why we need to work on an agreement first.
We put it in there, out.
Because you're right.
Well, then, then.
After arbitration.
Well, then. I'm sorry to say that I don't think that. We. You can't have it both ways, is my point.
What's both ways?
If you're gonna, if you're gonna have. If you're gonna, through his retirement, if he gets single subscribe. Okay, so he's retired, he gets single subscriber. He's retired, he's lost the family.
He didn't lose it, well, he lost it as a retired rig.
Yes.
But we, we just hired the guy full-time. He now, under the, under the CBA, has up to a family plan available to him, it's his discretion, and we're denying him, so. And I'm saying the trade-off here should be that we give him that option. But that we, that we acknowledge the CBA with regards to the pay that he gets when he comes back. I think we should take this discussion after we have the union negotiations. I think we ought to abolish the whole goddamn policy itself. I think this is, this is a frig that we never envisioned, it has pitfalls that you guys don't even understand yet. And, you know, and I'm going to give you one of them right now, we're going to give Chris Thorne a check of $30,000. And he's going to get 198 hours of vacation time the day he walks through the door in January 1st. If he walks out February 1st and says, I quit, we've got to pay him $9,000 for that accrued time.
Yeah.
Yes, we do too, because the only thing we don't have to pay him is his personal base, there's nothing in that agreement that says we don't have to pay him for that accrued vacation.
So part of the return to work program is that the person does not have, get paid out at the end as part of the agreement.
That's if you, after a year, it doesn't say anything what happens if you get done within that year. The way this agreement is written, where I read this one, that if at the end of the year, you have to forfeit all your time. And whatnot. That's why I ask you, is this a one-year agreement? You said, no, this guy is here until he wants to get done, but what if he gets done February 1st? Now, you know, you can say, well, why would Chris get done? Well, he might not get done and go somewhere else. But remember, the sheriff is still looking for a chief deputy. He's already lost one of his lieutenants after he made a chief deputy, the other one's, another one's retiring, he's got one lieutenant left if he can't find somebody from the outside law enforcement community. And if Chris Thorne, February 1st, becomes his chief deputy, we have to pay all his accrued time off because he goes from exempt union employee to a non-exempt, non-union employee. So we have to pay that off when he made that switch. So, you know, there are more pitfalls to this thing than you guys envisioned. To get right into the weeds and said, look, that's why I say we ought to take this policy today and move to a policy. So let's put it off, go after the union negotiations.
Okay, so we're going to table this item now that everybody's in such a great mood.
Appreciate the time.
Yes. Okay, so we're going to move item D up and then we'll, we'll take up, uh, B and C next, after, that what the plan is. No?
I'm sorry, I, I had my issues, but, uh, what'd you say?
Okay, so we're going to move on to item D and table B and C, the last.
We're going to move on to C. Wait, I'm sorry, yeah.
We're going to move on to D.
You're going, we're going to move and then come back to C?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, so if we're ready to do that, I'm going to move to win the executive second pursuant to MRFA title 1, that applies 6D for union contract negotiations discussion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moving to second, all in favor?
On, aye.